I can go ahead and call the meeting to order of the subcommittee, the police, policing and public safety, police practices and public safety alternatives, subcommittee of the racial equity and social justice committee. And it's the 28th of January in 2021. So we can take a roll call. And do you want to go ahead and do that for us? Thank you.
Okay, Veronica.
Here.
Patrice. Patrice.
Here, sorry, I was on mute.
Okay, Alexandra.
Here.
Daria.
Present.
Bruce.
Here. And Lisa is here to facilitate. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you for having me. Is that the official handoff?
Um, yeah, well, I'm actually digging up my agenda here so that I can see what's next.
But I. That's my cue. I missed my cue. I would not have made a good actress.
Think you would have been great.
Actually, I've heard that before. Hi, everyone. So good to see you all in this wonderful subcommittee. And thank you for inviting me to facilitate and hold space for you to do this work. I appreciate it. It's good to see you all here. And we have a very simple agenda today. And so I know that there's a couple of things that came up. I'd like to make a motion, have approval of the agenda before we start moving forward. So someone will have to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, that motion.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. We will open with our usual doing some setting of roles. And the subcommittee purpose, I wanted to just offer a reminder of that purpose. We'll move into questions. You have started a list of questions for police chief and town manager, but we'll go ahead and complete those questions tonight. And then we'll discuss the development of a mission and vision statement potentially for the subcommittee. And we will open it up to public comments and we'll, we'll close the meeting. So I wanted to just ground us in our common purpose before we start. And I'm going to read what the town council set forth for the subcommittee. And as I read it, if everybody could just think of one word, just one word that comes up for you and your vision for this work. A subcommittee of the RESJ will be formed to specifically focus on policing within Fairfax. Fairfax has for many years had its own police force and 911 dispatch center charged with community policing. A representative of the Fairfax Police will participate in these discussions, which will be an opportunity to deeply understand how policing operates in our town. For police leadership to listen to the needs of the community it serves and for policies to be improved where necessary and to explore alternative public safety models. Does that sound familiar? We haven't probably looked at it in a while. So we'll just do a quick whip around as a way to open our meeting and just share one word that comes up for you when you envision this work for Fairfax. And we'll just do, I'll call on, okay. Go ahead, Patrice.
I would say my one word is community.
Thank you. Daria, do I see you leaning in?
Yeah. Healing.
Healing. Space. Thank you.
Courageous.
Thank you. Last but not least, Bruce.
Oh, I didn't hear Alexandra's. I have to say healing, that's just so strongly the word for me.
Wonderful. So as we do our work tonight, this is very emotional work. And I just want to name the emotion that will be in the room, both as RESJ members, but also as community members who have lived many of the things that we're talking about. And just a second, we'll go over our norms. And I have a question regarding the norms, but I just wanted to ground us a little bit before we started. And so the words that your colleagues shared were community, healing, twice, space and courageous. So I'd ask us all to hold those words in our heart tonight as we work together. So we have norms for RESJ. And I wanted to ask before I assumed, will you be holding the same norms for your subcommittee work? I see all thumbs up. Wonderful. So Anne, if you could share the norms. And as she shares, you know what my question is going to be. I'm going to ask for a volunteer to be a process observer. And just a reminder, you know, in the beginning, the facilitator holds a lot of the norms as, as we're getting started, but holding norms is our collective work. And so I want to call on all of you, in particular, the process observer, who of course I will support, but I also want to call on all of you to hold the norms and to support with love and compassion and kindness, your colleagues to hold, to hold the norms. They were jointly created and jointly agreed upon. And so just a reminder that it's our collective responsibility as a team, both on RESJ and in our subcommittee work. Uh, do you see the screen? We can see the screen. Can you expand it? And then we'll, we won't see all the rest of your items. Yeah. Which I don't mind, but you might mind.
And I'm not sure if, if I'm seeing all of the community agreements here. I think there were more when you, there you go.
Yeah, we'll scroll. I'm going to read them really quickly, just as a way to call them into the room. And then we'll scroll down. Thank you for that. So what, so first is bravery and risk-taking, being open, honor personal accounts, respect, active listening, ask questions and don't assume. Each person has the opportunity to speak, share airtime and is heard. Not up for debate. That was in reference to people's stories and experience. Respect response to triggers. It's okay to make mistakes. Values aren't selective. Don't yuck my yum. Be reflective and check in on yourself. Welcome somatic reflection. Oops, I lost my place. Okay. Own your, own your privilege. Bring community along and foster inclusion. Remember why we are here and we are the RESJ. Privilege of leave, remember the privilege of leisurely activism. And I'm going to hold off on the laboratory design because we haven't covered that yet. Any questions about the norms? Clarifications? I know it's a good reminder for me as a facilitator of all the things we have to hold in this space. So do we have a volunteer to be our process observer tonight? Bruce, wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, Anne, if you could bring us all back together on the screen. Sorry. It's all right. I'm going to keep going while you do that. And then if I could have also a timekeeper to support my facilitation for a meeting tonight, Patrice, thank you. All right. Any questions before we go on? Patrice.
As timekeeper, I would like to know how long this meeting is and what time exactly I'm keeping. Are we doing like 15 minutes per segment? Or sorry, I'm a nerd.
No, I love it. I will prompt you. So we will go until 8:30. And we generally design the agendas for the full time, with the exception of public comment. So content wise, this agenda was designed for a little over an hour. But public comment can change some of our, some of our timing. And we know that when we plan the agenda, this first section, and again, we'll check in with each other if more time is needed. But the first section is about 40 minutes to complete your questions. And then the second section is 30, but I'll prompt you, Patrice.
Okay, great.
Yeah. And so we're at about 7:10, 7:15 right now. So this section, you can give us a 30 minute warning about 7:45. Just kind of helps us, helps us stay on track. And if we need to make adjustments based on need, then you've seen me work with that before. So we'll go ahead and we'll go ahead and do that. So this part is really an open dialogue. I know that you started a list of questions for the police chief. And then Garrett mentioned that some of the questions might need to go to him. So as town manager, so we included him in the agenda. And our work tonight is to just complete the questions. And I can pull up a jam board or, you know, a Word document that we can collectively share, but we did not start that as a tool for this meeting. So. And we'll open it up to, to dialogue. If someone would like to perhaps start with a summary of where you are so far in the work, Veronica?
Yeah, I was wondering if you have it, Anne, the document of the notes that Bruce and I took around the last meeting with those questions? And if that would be helpful to bring up onto the screen for us to look at together right now?
I, is that something that's been in my inbox for a while? Or when would that come in?
And it might not.
Couple of days ago that it, that it was finalized. Lisa has it in her inbox and I have it as well, but. Right, Lisa.
No, I have a, I have a draft version, but we didn't receive a public version. We can certainly show it, but we didn't receive a public version for posting. Yeah.
Should I email it to Anne right now?
It hasn't been approved by the committee, but it's just our notes that Veronica took. And I, I gave some input to that as well ahead of time, but Veronica primarily.
Veronica, if you send it to me now, I can pull it. I can do it, you know, so, okay.
Just shared it with your town of Fairfax email. I wonder if I need to do it to a Google email because it's a Google Drive doc.
So as she pulls that up, what, what are you hoping to accomplish? I just want to give us a collective goal here. And the goal we set forth in the agenda was to accomplish the completion of questions. So that would mean not only a brainstorm of questions, but also a consolidation of questions that you want to ask. Is that, is that still resonating for folks? I know we approved the agenda, but I just want to make sure we're on the same page as we enter into the dialogue. Does that still resonate for everybody as a goal tonight?
Yeah.
And Bruce, is that a hand?
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say also that we, I would hope that we would have ongoing dialogue with the police. And therefore, we don't have to get every question in. If we want to try to focus on whatever we'd like to focus on, top level things, getting to know people, whatever it is that we want to focus on. We, we don't have to all be really nervous that our question isn't going to get in because. And we could also say, these are some other questions that came up that we maybe don't have time for on the next meeting. But, you know, so we, we can send this entire list if we like. But just, just a suggestion in terms of how we think about this. So the question, the list doesn't get so long.
I love that idea, Bruce. I think that there's a way to almost chunk our list up into segments with topic items so that we're not overwhelming Rico in our first meeting by hitting him with questions from every direction. I think that we can be a little more strategic.
And Veronica?
Thanks, Lisa. I just wanted to bring up a couple of thoughts around inviting, as excited as I am, as you all know, to be moving forward in this committee, specifically the subcommittee. Wanted to just mention that we had talked about appointing a chairperson to be leading our subcommittee and mentioned last meeting that we felt, or I mentioned it, and I believe that Daria lifted it up as well, maybe as Alexandra. But don't let me speak for you if you want to voice otherwise, that we wanted, thought it would be helpful to have that be a member of the public, as in one of the four of us who are not mayor acrimon as a council member and mayor. And just have some thoughts, concerns around like jumping fast of inviting Lieutenant Tamboranza into a meeting with us without us having our foundation as a subcommittee, both in the establishment of who's going to be leading that meeting, though Lisa may be facilitating, just wondering if we're putting the carriage before the horse and if we ought not to wait to have Lieutenant Tabaranza come until the next meeting after the one that we have following, so that we can establish who our chairperson is. And secondly, to be talking about our mission and vision statements first, in a, in part of that foundation, to really have that firmly established before we welcome in the, the interim chief of police. And just some thoughts that I had, as excited as I am about all these questions.
If I can just say, I'd like to.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop us for just a second. So we need to, this is a really small group. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bruce. I just wanted, I want to hold a norm right now. So typically we do hand calling in RESJ because the group is so large. I don't have a vested interest in process, except that, you know, people feel heard and they can participate. This group is much smaller. So if we could just make a choice right now, because we're using two different participation styles. One, some people are calling out just out loud popcorn. And then some people are raising a hand. So I think with a smaller group, it lends itself to just having open dialogue, but I don't want to make the decision for you. So can we just go through really quickly and make a choice about what you'd prefer to do? Given that we're a really small group?
I personally like raising the hands because I know that I talk a lot. And so it helps me not step over what other people are saying.
Okay, thank you for that. Veronica, hand raise. Okay. Okay, Daria, I can't see you on my screen.
Oh, I, I don't have a preference.
Okay. You don't have.
I think we can keep Patrice in check.
Okay, well, that's holding our collective norms. Okay, and Alex, do you have a preference?
Um, I like the hand raising, but specifically for right now in this moment, it's hard to see everyone. So I'm kind of feeling like a little lost in all of it. So maybe if while we're not using the screen, I mean, I think we're going to, we're about to use it, but just remembering that, that it's hard to see everyone when we're.
Alexandra, I just minimized the document and now I actually see all of you. I just moved it to the left slightly. And now I've got everyone on screen, which makes it a lot easier.
Okay. Do you see where you can do that, Alex?
Yeah, I, I just, yeah, I figured it out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I have, okay, so, so, and I'm missing Bruce. Do you have a preference, hand raising?
I'm fine with the hand raising. I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so we're going to go with hand raising. And so I'm going to call on Bruce, Patrice, and then Veronica.
So I just wanted to, to own the, the fact that I made a mistake as the current chair, person working on the agenda. I made a mistake in not including that discussion about the chair. And so due to the Brown Act, we can't really appoint a chair. We could discuss it possibly at the end of the meeting if we have time. But, so I just wanted to take responsibility for that. And I think we should, we do have an item on our agenda tonight to talk about items on the next agenda. And that certainly has come up as an item on the next agenda. So, and then, and I do support the idea of having that discussion. If we think we could have it quickly, we could have it at the beginning and then still have Rico at the next meeting. But it is an interesting question Veronica raises. And I'm interested in seeing what other people think about putting off bringing Rico in. I, I would love, I'm looking forward to seeing this committee and the police get to know each other. So that's my personal bias. But if, if we want to discuss things more before we get to that point, that's okay. Thanks.
Patrice, you're next.
I, I think I'm just echoing exactly what Bruce said. He, he heard the words in my head and took them out of my mouth. But I think that.
That's some teamwork.
The sooner we can bring Rico in, the sooner we can all become a team. And I know that when I've been brought into committees that have already formed and done bylaws and done next steps and everything, you feel like you're a little late to the party. So I understand that there's a need for us to put together what we want to do. But I would say, let's just make it smaller for the first meeting and bring him in as quickly as we can because he's going to be an invaluable resource for us.
Veronica, you were up and then Daria.
I just wanted to mention because you had, maybe you have Alexandra in your life, Lisa, who you call Alex, but after last meeting, I asked Alexandra what she prefers. And she said that she preferred Alexandra instead of.
Oh, absolutely. Thank you for that.
Yeah, and that's.
And Alex, Alexandra, you can call me out on that, please.
Can we, can we call you A-Roe?
Yeah, please, please check me if, if I ever do that by accident.
It's, it's honestly, it's, I just didn't think it was worth interrupting the meeting, but I appreciate it. Thank you.
I absolutely think it's worth it to get your name right. So. And Veronica, did you have more to say? Or?
Oh, no.
Okay. Daria.
I just wanted to say that I think Veronica makes a lot of sense, you know, having things set up. But I, I'm leaning toward engaging Rico sooner than later. And we don't have to be a perfect subcommittee to get together with him and start a conversation. Might even be better if we were a little more relaxed.
So one, one opportunity is when we vote to approve the agenda. And this is my experience from facilitating other Brown Act meetings. And if this, Bruce, you'll have to correct me or Anne if this is different in Fairfax. But one of the things that can happen when we approve an agenda is there can be adjustments in that moment to say, I'd like to, you know, move item, you know, C to the top of the order, and I'd like to move item B to the bottom. And actually, whoops, we forgot that we need to choose a chair. And so I would like to add item. You make a motion to add an item or make an adjustment to the agenda. And, and that's really actually a participatory strategy for democracy, where we've set an agenda forth, but you all have an opportunity before we begin a meeting. I'm just having a meta moment here. You have an opportunity to, before a meeting, to weigh in and adjust and, and give your input. So just for, if we can't do it now because we now approved the agenda and it is by the Brown Act, so we can't actually make adjustments once an agenda is approved. But for future reference, that is the opportunity to make any changes or adjustments to the agenda. Bruce.
Well, just, and I'm not the Brown Act expert, but I, we can actually, in the middle of the meeting, we could rearrange the order of things on the agenda or decide to table something. We do that all the time. So that's not an issue. But I think it is an issue to add an action item to the agenda when it wasn't on the agenda, because that's the idea that, that the public gets to decide whether, oh, there's something they're going to take action on. And I want to be at the meeting to give input to it. And so that's the, that's, that is the problem there.
That's my understanding as well.
Um, Lisa, this, we, we've been on a call since 5:30. So I didn't have a chance to print out the agenda. Is there any way we can show the agenda really quickly to, to speak to Bruce's points and rearrange or add or, or delete before we go into our, our notes and our questions?
Sure, but we can't add any items at this point because the agenda was approved. And there's.
I guess just showing it?
Yeah, yeah. Anne, could you help us out with that? And there's, so there's only two items, well, three. Right now, we're at item B. I'll just say it while she's pulling it up on the screen. Right now, we're at item B, development of questions for interim police chief and town manager at 40 minutes. And then item C follows development of mission and vision statement for 30 minutes. And it is sort of question whether or not you're doing that. Discuss a need for and possible adoptions of. D is public comment. And then E is the closing of our meeting. And if you could scroll Anne to the second page, please.
Got it. That was helpful, Lisa. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Veronica.
Thank you so much for articulating what the agenda process approval dynamic is. I've not had that ever communicated to me on various boards that I've sat on within the town. And so it's so helpful. Thank you for equipping us with those skills and that information. And secondly, I just wanted to, to say that as excited as I am about building a relationship with Lieutenant Tabaranza, I am also aware and, and a little wary of the sense of like, I, I'm just aware that there's going to also be times, most likely, that there will be needs to push Lieutenant Tabaranza or our police department toward the direction that is more seismic to bring in some of the language from our RESJ mission and vision statements. And feel just sensitive to the sense of like wrapping our arms fully around them when at this, at the investment or the incarnation of this subcommittee was indeed to really put them through a rigorous lens of ensuring that racial justice is being prioritized in policing. And so just want to air that reality, that as excited as I am to welcome them in, my, my goal in this subcommittee personally is not to just become best friends with the police, but to be prepared to engage in dialogue that might be challenging and confrontational, though at the same time, not only being confrontational for the sake of that.
Patrice.
Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that acting chief, no longer lieutenant, Rico Tabaranza is a person of color. And he is someone who we should be leaning on to bring into our group, to help our group, and then to take our ideas to the public. So I feel, and I, I'm sorry if this, if, if this seems not as sensitive as our values. I'm trying to be sensitive, but I feel that if anyone is intimidated by bringing the interim police chief in, we should think about that person being on the committee. Because this committee is only as good as its parts. And if we're not involving the police, we're just going to be at odds with them the whole time, as opposed to having someone who's vested, who's running it. And Rico Tabaranza is someone, he's actually half-black. Don't know if you know that, but he's a person of color. He understands the issues we're facing. And we need to be able to confront him in a way that's inclusive, not attacking or bringing him in and making him feel uncomfortable. Because the same way that we want to ask, not assume, we need to give him that same credit.
Alex.
Um, so I, I don't totally disagree with what Veronica said. However, I do think it's important, and it was mentioned in the last meeting by someone, a member of the public, who had mentioned, you know, not to assume the worst going into this. And so I think it is important to establish a baseline understanding of our goals and his goals. And so I think one kind of maybe even just conversation that we can have is to talk about what already exists that is, that is working towards an anti-racist Fairfax, specifically the police department, so that we are not assuming that they're doing all of these things wrong. And that we understand where they are in the current moment. But I just also, I don't, I think that Veronica is correct in that sometimes we, things could get confrontational or we might have hard conversations. And that is super important to be aware of. But I think having that initial conversation, and maybe that gives us more time to create questions and to prepare our mission statement, as Veronica was mentioning. But just having that initial conversation to get to, to know him and him to get to know us, so that we have a mutual understanding in our intentions could potentially be more beneficial than just throwing questions at him and interviewing him or interrogating him.
I'd like to add something with your permission. I can't. So I think that some of what you're talking about really is so much about the role of a facilitator. um, the role of a facilitator and how we hold space for all of you to do your work. And so in very fraught, um, contexts, whether it's a meeting, a dialogue, a training, whatever the case might be, it is not uncommon when we're talking about social justice issues for it to be a very emotional, highly charged, fraught space to state perhaps the obvious, but still worth stating, I think, for the sake of conversation. And so I think that thinking strategically about your next meeting, um, one thought is to leave, we have 10 minutes at the end. And perhaps we consider leaving a bit more time at the end to discuss items for the next meeting. And you could do a little bit of visioning around what does need to happen at that meeting? Because what you're really talking about isn't, you know, there is a way to have very constructive conflict and very productive conflict. And, and it would be perhaps just as an offering worth the time for you to look at, you know, what does that mean? What does it even look like to have constructive conflict? And how do you build a relationship, you know, not skipping through the, the woods, La La Land? How do you build a relationship, um, with the chief? Um, interim chief, I believe is the appropriate term right now, um, to do the work. And it doesn't mean you don't disagree and it doesn't mean that you, you know, live in La La Land either. Um, so I would just offer part of my job and roles to make sure that that space is held for all of you to really do intentional purposeful work. It's really hard to do that yourselves, right? When you're in a meeting. Um, so I just want to name that. And then I also just want to make the offering that there's ways we can engage in dialogue and team building at your next meeting together. And I'm happy to brainstorm that with you at the end. Um, that can contribute to all of the goals that you've all, they all can be met within that meeting space. All right. Are we good to continue with the questions? Daria.
My first question is, um, can we have this a little bit of a brainstorming style? Because I have a, I've written down questions, but I haven't separated them out. This is something we can deal with later, or this is something for Garrett, or this is something for Rico. It's just, I'm hoping we can tease them out later and not in advance.
My understanding, the way we planned the agenda was to continue the brainstorm. And then you'll have to make decisions about, okay, you know, what do you do with? Because of my understanding is you were not done with the brainstorm list. And when I watched the last meeting, I saw that as well. Um, and so I would, I would offer time for brainstorm. And then you can decide what you want to do about the brainstorm. And we have about 10 minutes left on this section.
Makes sense.
No, we don't. I'm sorry. We have longer than that. Uh, I think we have 20, timekeeper?
Until 7:45.
Thank you. Veronica.
Just really quickly, I, we were developing these questions. I thought that they were for interim chief Tabaranza. I didn't, I'm curious why Garrett, um, got added into the agenda as we like to think about questions that we're going to be asking Garrett. And maybe Bruce, you can speak to that if you added that to the agenda.
It was actually, it was, I added it at Garrett's request that some of the questions might be, so when we do a brainstorm agenda and then I do a final agenda that goes to Garrett. Um, and he makes sure it's Brown Act complaint and, and different things like that. And one of the comments he made was that some of those questions may need to go to him as well. They absolutely do not have to go to him, but that as town manager, it might be a question that he could better answer. So there's no, there's no, just a sec, there's no directive there that they have to go to him. Um, it was just to highlight, he may be a person to ask. Uh, so Patrice and then Daria, I think you had your hand back up.
I, I'm just starting to get concerned about the effectiveness of this commu, of this committee. And I feel like, A, we should bring in our interim chief, perhaps our future chief of police to help us better ourselves and better our committee. And I also feel that putting something in the middle of that dialogue, i.e. the town manager answering questions that we want to hear directly from the police, might not be such a good idea. I just don't, I don't like that idea at all.
Completely up to all of you. Daria and then Bruce.
The, the only question I had for Garrett was one I think we all wanted to understand was what about the MOU? And how does it affect our decision-making? That's all.
Okay. And so we could take note of that and, um, write it next to the question with his name. Bruce.
Yeah, and I, just to be clear, Lisa, you described it quite well. I was not aware until this meeting that, that Garrett had even said that. And my understanding would be that yes, there'd be things like what Daria had mentioned that, that Garrett might be the best one to answer, but I would propose that we, as we come up with our questions, that they all get sent to Rico. And he can look at them and he can decide whether to say anything about them. There's no reason to run it through Garrett first as a middleman. And I, I completely agree with Patrice that we shouldn't, we should be having a dialogue with Rico and possibly maybe former chief Moran or whoever, but we should, that's who we should be dialoguing with, not through a middle person. Yeah.
And can I get consensus on that just for the good of the conversation? And Alexandra, great. Okay. Thank you. So any other questions? Uh, Daria, you mentioned that you had a few, perhaps? Any other questions that you all feel need to go on here?
It's hard for me to read, um, the small print and I'm not sure if I might be repeating myself, but, um, I have some general and some specific questions. One of them is, I, I'd like to know, um, what Rico perceives as particular strengths of our Fairfax Police Department. I'd also like to know from him, what is the most difficult thing about his job as a peace officer in Fairfax? And I have a whole bunch more, but I'm not going to monopolize.
Patrice.
I'd like to add a subpoint to Daria's first question. Um, she asked about what we perceive, or he perceives as the particular strengths of the police department. I'd like to know what he sees as the strengths and weaknesses of our community.
I have another one.
Okay, Daria.
I'd like, uh, to know what are the obstacles and barriers to law enforcement effectiveness in Fairfax? If there are any.
Will you say that one more time, Daria?
Uh, what are obstacles and barriers to law enforcement effectiveness in Fairfax? For example, um, lack of prosecution by the DA. I want to suggest that he also, um, I'd like to hear from him about, um, his own experience with racism.
Veronica.
Just knowing our limit of time that you brought up, Patrice, curious if we might not develop any more questions and just try to do that thing we mentioned of finding themes and, kind of wondering what if we each, if we find our themes that, that are represented in these questions? And if we each might pick out within those themes of like three that really resonate that we can then ask ourselves. So we're all getting a voice in the conversation, um, that we have with interim chief Tabaranza. Curious what you all think about that.
I like that idea. And I also want to say that we have three minutes left for, for this agenda item.
We need to move faster next time. I'd like to know why he chose to work in Fairfax and if he commutes to Fairfax and what that's like for him. Why, why he chose, yes, why he chose to work in Fairfax. I'd like to know the police perception of the Res J subcommittee, if he's aware of that. And if he has thoughts about models of policing. The community policing, progressive policing.
So in the, in the last few minutes, um, how would you like to proceed in terms of prioritizing the list, chunking the list perhaps for some things that are mentioned? Um, one thing just for future meetings is everybody can get access to the same document and it can be, as long as it showed publicly, it can be a working document. It's much, much harder in the larger Res J because there's too many people that have it work effectively. But with this small group, it's actually quite manageable. Um, so just for future reference, but how would you all like to proceed? Veronica, then Patrice.
So does that mean that we could take this document off? Take this off this meeting and chunk it together into our themes over the next two weeks? No, can't do that.
So unless, and this again, I share Bruce's, I'm, I, I have expertise, but I am not an expert. Um, so because you are a subcommittee by the Brown Act, a subset of the subcommittee, one or two people could do the chunking offline, but you may not work together as a committee on anything, um, related to committee work offline because it needs to be public. Patrice.
Um, I love chunking. I'm a dork. Uh, Daria lives four houses down from me and I'd like to perhaps recommend that Daria and I take the first stab at chunking this out into topics and themes because I think it will be hard to do in a group and then get that back to Anne for everyone to see and to edit, just so that we can continue to move forward.
Daria.
Yeah, I'm not sure I can do that. As attractive an offer as it is.
Okay.
I'm also concerned about getting all these questions out because I, I have a bunch here and some of them have to do with police training and, um, a lot of things that we don't have time to review today.
So a reminder, and then I see your hands, Alexandra and Bruce, um, a reminder that this is your initial list. And so this isn't the last time you'll have an opportunity to hear from him. And I do think, just in terms of thinking about like effective facilitation and meeting dialogue, which is more my role, not as an opinion, but to target your questions based on your priorities. And so if you have priorities for getting the work started, just a thought is organizing the questions based on those priorities because this is a very long list. And if he was to answer all of these, um, which that may be the need, the meeting would run probably into several hours, which is completely within your purview to do, um, but just as a, you know, as a note and a noticing here. Um, Alex and Bruce.
Yeah, so I just wanted to point out, um, maybe this will put your mind at ease, Daria, is that some of the questions that, um, you had just asked were already on here and I believe you put them on here last week. So just like, just because I know you mentioned you couldn't see the.
Yes.
So some of these are here now twice. So there is a question about police training on this list. So maybe that's another reason why we could, if we could get sent this and, and just see it.
I think it's guys, just timekeeping, we're two minutes over where we should be right now.
Thank you. So Bruce, and then I'm going to hold and do a, a, just a facilitation check. Bruce.
So it's, it's feeling to me like this, and I, I totally agree with what Alexandra said, and thank you for that. There, there is already duplication on this list, so it's not quite as long as it looks like it is, but I also hear that Daria has more to add and others may as well. It's feeling to me like, um, maybe we aren't ready to invite Rico to the next meeting, much as I would like to because we just haven't finished with our process of, of developing the list. And I think it's been a good process. We've had, I thought last meeting was very good. We had sort of a popcorn style brainstorming and now we're doing some more of that. And we're talking about how we can go about, um, consolidating it. I think that's all good, but we don't have time in this meeting unless we all want to decide to stay another hour later to, to get this done. So it, that may be what we need to do, just throwing that out.
Daria, I see your hand and I'm just going to do a time check right now. Would everybody like to close this sec, this section as per the agenda or do you want to extend time? Because we are at time right now, so.
I'm open to closing it and I would also be open to taking the first stab at putting this in chunks. And it sounded like Lisa, you said we could share it via Google Docs and everyone could take a look at it.
Yeah, but you can, yeah, just to be clear in my understanding, um, you can look at it via Google Docs, but you cannot collectively engage in work on the same Google Doc in absence of the public.
Got it. So if I were to create topics and themes, I could not send to the rest of the committee?
So, so you can send it, you cannot have, and I think Bruce is about to weigh in. Um, you can send it, but you may not have discussion or work about it in absence of the public. Bruce? And then Veronica and.
That's perfect. That's a perfect statement. So a subcommittee of this subcommittee, you suggested a couple of people, Patrice. So maybe two people could get together, go through the process of chunking it up. And then you could also send it and it would probably be best to do it through Lisa to just send it to her and have her send it or through Anne to have, to have it sent to the committee so that everybody can read the work that you've done. But that, but we can't actually as a committee all come in together and work on that on a Google Doc. But then at the next meeting, we'd have a good head start on it. We wouldn't have to start with the proverbial blank piece of paper. We would have the chunking, you know, done and we just adjust it from there.
Okay, so Daria.
That's great.
A sec, Patrice, just a sec, if, just a second, I'll get you right after Veronica. So Daria, Veronica and Patrice.
My last comment is I just think it's important that we, uh, agree on what the goal is of the meeting, what we hope to accomplish with Rico. And, um, in, in my view, it has to do with establishing a positive relationship. So, um, I, I, I wouldn't throw all the tough questions at him on the first meeting.
Veronica and then Patrice.
Thanks, Lisa. I'll try to be swift because I want to honor that we're over our time on this and feel like there's other things that are important on the agenda too. But this conversation, this very moment is raising something that I've been feeling um, a lot about and have emailed, um, different council members, Bruce specifically about, um, around the feeling of inertia or the impasse of momentum based on sharing documents, not taking action on anything and definitely not wanting to do anything that the public ought to be commenting on before we pass or take any action on anything. So not wanting to actually break any Brown Act laws, but feeling the weight of Brown Act on our subcommittee in a way that's feeling very, um, uh, it's stalling a lot of sharing of information that could be really helpful. And that's not trying to keep anything from the public. So I just wanted to raise that publicly that I am feeling like it could be very helpful. And I, I know that council, um, it could be taken to town council by Bruce and Stephanie, um, to consider that this subcommittee, since we're less than a majority of Res J, technically does not have to be subject to the Brown Act in terms of how we share information through email like this, this exact type of situation. And that if there were something that we thought should, action should be taken on, we would have to give it, give it to Res J to be brought up in our, our public meeting there anyways. And public comment would be able to be heard on it before any like. And public comment would be able to be heard on it before any like hard rule or hard action would be taken. So it feels a little bit redundant and like unnecessary to have our subcommittee be under the Brown Act and have public comment come each time we want to make something, have an action approved and then go to RESJ and have the exact same process happen once more before even goes to town council or the town at large. So I just wanted to say it would be so helpful to just be able to really communicate with us, each other as swiftly as we need to on these things, especially thinking of the MOU. Yeah.
Patrice and then Bruce.
I was just going to say that again, I volunteer to chunk this up. And if there's someone out there who would like to work with me, I would be Veronica. Great.
Bruce?
Veronica, thank you for that suggestion. And as I've said, I, it's, this is, this subcommittee is like no other that I've ever been on, not only because you all are unique and wonderful individuals, but because the position of it, it's being in the Brown Act, but also a subcommittee is odd. And so, yeah, I, I would, I could, now the agenda, the next town council meeting is next Wednesday and the agenda is set for that. So we can't, there's the Brown Act again. We can't bring that to the council this Wednesday. But I would be willing to bring that up to the council as a specific question that what, let's get some clarification from the council because we are operating under council direction. The council sort of set us up as the people, the RESJ was formed and then the RESJ was told, you need to form this specific subcommittee and this subcommittee needs to be public. And so based on that, here we are. And yes, it is confusing and maybe we should go back for a bit of clarification before the public as to what exactly we mean by the Brown Act. I think it's, I think it's, my personal feeling is it is very important that this be a public subcommittee, but whether public subcommittee means that we can't work on something offline. But I would say working on something, you know, if we aren't completely a Brown Act subcommittee, then that means the other thing that, that the thing that makes that work under the intent and the spirit of the Brown Act is that the subcommittee really doesn't take any action. The subcommittee only makes recommendations to the larger committee. So on our climate action committee, we form subcommittees, I'm on multiple of them and we work like crazy and that's how we get our work done. We can just work and we can share documents, we can meet whenever we need to. We don't have noticing, we don't have public comment, but we also, the only thing we do is come back to the whole committee and say, wow, we're all exhausted, but here's a document, take a look at it. And then that, that committee can still make changes to the document before it's actually adopted. So those two go hand in hand. If we're willing to say, you know, so anyway, I would, I would, I appreciate that suggestion. Thank you.
So I'm going to, I keep a list of items for the next agenda, but I, I can also forget things. So just as a reminder, when we get to the end of this meeting and we're creating a brainstorm for the next agenda, I have that down as an item. And just a last note on that, you can't have it only be half a Brown Act meeting. It either is a Brown Act meeting and it's subject to all of the requirements of a Brown Act or it's not a Brown Act meeting. You can't accept some parts of your meeting that don't fit the desired goals or more like the desired work stream. I also, until a decision is made, I do encourage everybody to lean into the fact that it's a Brown Act meeting. It's quite extraordinary that you have made a commitment to the public of Fairfax to be as transparent as you, as you are in your government leadership. And so part of what I have seen in my work with, with policing issues at large, trust erodes when there's a lack of transparency because people fill in the blanks and they fill in the blanks with their own experiences, which is very valid, and their own beliefs and values. But when we fill in blanks and absence of, of a factual representation of a meeting in front of us, it can lead to a lot of misunderstanding and unnecessary challenges in the work. And so I really understand the frustrations, what you're faced with, and I, I'm not weighing in on an opinion on this as a facilitator, but I do want to offer a counterpoint as a facilitator that you have a tremendous opportunity to create an inclusive environment for your community. And there's ways to work within the Brown Act and I'm happy to talk offline. I don't want to take your agenda time to brainstorm those ways where you can work within the Brown Act and it actually isn't restrictive and as restrictive as it's feeling. So I just want to offer that brainstorming. And I'll segue into, we have an offering to take this and chunk it by Patrice and Veronica. And how would you all like to move forward? We don't need an official motion, but I do want to ask the committee, what would you like to do right now? Close the session? In which case we're still five, 10 minutes over our agenda and have them chunk it? Or do you feel like you need to continue discussing?
Do we, do we have more items to add? Daria, it sounded like maybe you did, although maybe they might already be on the part you can't read.
Well, no, not, yes. And not only that, there are not things that we can't discuss or add later on. So I think in the interest of expediting the process, I suggest that we close it.
Yeah, we're, we're 14 minutes beyond schedule.
Thank you, Patrice. And I, I saw Veronica do this, so I'm going to take that as close it. And Alexandra, you're saying that as well. Bruce, are you good to close it and move on?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll close this section and thank you to Patrice and Veronica for offering to chunk it. And then Bruce, you will take this issue back to town council and raise it with town council, correct? The Brown Act issue?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and close out item B and move on to item C. And so, Anne, if you'll go ahead and bring us all back together. So this item, we have 30 minutes. And I would make a recommendation that we do 20 based on your need as a committee and do a check in, a time check at 20 to try to keep you on agenda for the evening. Does that work for you all? A lot of thumbs up, a nod, Veronica, Bruce, no Bruce nodding, okay. So this was a very loosely organized time. No jambors and fancy protocols to just open the floor for you all to have an open discussion about the possible adoption of a mission and vision statement and the benefits of doing that. And Bruce, you and I had a conversation about this and sort of brainstormed some thoughts about it back and forth. I don't know if you feel like they're helpful to open the session or not.
You're asking me? Well, yeah, I, I I feel like that is and was and continues to be an important topic for the RESJ as a whole. And it's on the agenda or will be on the agenda to continue that process. With the RESJ, I, I, I'm not sure that we need to go deeper into that within the subcommittee. But I think Lisa, you had suggested some other ways of thinking about sort of teasing out the idea of mission or vision or possibly other things that might maybe help us to clarify what the need is that we are looking to satisfy.
Just one of the things Bruce and I are talking about developing the agenda was, you know, how many missions and visions will RESJ have? And how, if the purpose of a mission and vision is actually to be operationalized, right? And that's always a challenge. Does it live in the bottom of a desk drawer or computer file? Or is it actually a living, breathing mission and vision, which is the goal? Then it will become harder and harder to hold each mission and vision if you're building one for every subcommittee. And so I'm not weighing in on an opinion, but we did brainstorm alternatives. And so just one offering is to think about it. If the mission and vision feels like an absolute necessity, then of course that's up to all of you. But an alternative is to really think about just beliefs and values. And so often time and mission and vision work will see mission, vision, and then falling out from that are beliefs and values usually about the organization. But in this case, it might be beliefs and values for your policing subcommittee. So that might be one way to think about your work that would connect to the larger purpose of RESJ, but also be very unique and specific for all of you as a team. And I think that's, that's all we covered. Patrice and then Alexandra.
Um, so I was trained that you don't have multiple missions and you don't have multiple visions. I think it makes it really complicated and it's impossible to follow and it becomes inefficient. So perhaps we could develop a goal for this committee that sits underneath the mission and vision that's already been established for RESJ. We are a subcommittee of that group.
And Alexandra and then Veronica.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar. I think just having like maybe a sentence that represents what we're doing, our goals, what we aim to do. A couple of things I thought about was like that we represent or hold space for the community. Wording can be discussed or help to create and or maintain maybe is a better word. An anti-racist Fairfax, just something simple, just a quick sentence that represents us and can be easily put into our RESJ full mission statement.
Veronica. I think I've missed your, a couple of times. So I apologize if I've missed your, we have nodding and hands raising and I think I might have missed the order. So I apologize.
Am I speaking ahead of somebody that you think maybe had their hand raised?
No, I think I missed you.
I'm, I really, I'm happy to be missed to let particularly other members of our committee be heard, but thank you. And I just wanted to lift up the resolution that the town of Fairfax, the council members created that formed our subcommittee and, and it was that the RESJ shall, shall appoint a subcommittee of its members to explore police practices, public safety alternatives and funding and other related issues. So quite simply, I don't feel like there's a need to muddle what we're doing or think too much on it. It is, it feels like our mandate is to explore police practices and public safety alternatives for the town of Fairfax specifically and to talk about what funding looks like to help that.
I see lots of nodding and I, I would, I'm not here to give opinions, but I can tell you in my experience, I 100% concur with Patrice in terms of just organizational and committee effectiveness, having competing mission and visions. So in the time left, how would you all, I hear and see nodding in regards to having a very short statement. There were some offerings of a statement. How would you all like to proceed? Do you want to brainstorm what that could be tonight? Patrice and then Daria.
I actually loved what Veronica just said. I don't think that we should recreate the wheel. I think that this subcommittee was established for a specific reason and I think Veronica just laid out our goal.
Daria.
I agree.
Other thoughts, Bruce, Alexandra?
Thought it was beautifully stated, yeah.
I mean, the town council stated that to be clear. I just read it from the resolution.
Well, yeah, but the, the, the focus on understanding police practices, looking at alternatives to police practices and looking at the funding that would be required to do that. That was what I heard, there's three distinct things and to just make sure that we don't miss any of those. And that may be pretty well written in what council gave us, so we can decide. But that's what I heard Veronica say and, and I also give it thumbs up.
So I'm seeing consensus around that. Do you want to make an agreement now about that? Would you like to formally agendize it next time to make a motion, take action rather, sorry?
I don't know this politician thing, but I, do I just say I agree with Veronica and I would like to make a motion to make that our goal?
We could do that.
Or second that motion.
And Anne, if you could do roll call, please?
Okay, Veronica?
Yes.
Alexandra?
Yes.
Patrice?
Aye.
Daria?
Aye.
Bruce?
Yes.
Okay. So Veronica's statement has been approved and I don't have it memorized. The statement of the Fairfax.
Thank you.
I stand corrected. I'm getting really good at reading these muted like head signals.
I'll read it right, right now I'm reading it from the resolution online and I can just read it directly. Yes. And it, it was item six on the resolution and it is, sorry, yes. It is the RESJ shall appoint a subcommittee of, so I'm going to say this and then maybe we'll have to say it without, with appropriate four words. The RESJ shall appoint a subcommittee of its members to explore police practices, public safety alternatives and funding and other related issues. I'd say that we cut off the and other related issues because that's kind of redundant. And say that our, the PPPSA subcommittee is designed to, we will explore police practices, public safety alternatives and funding for those alternatives.
So the approval was for the language of the resolution, not an alternative language?
Great.
And I think with, you guys get to decide if you, I mean, in this case, you wanted to take a formal action through a motion because you're a small subcommittee, it can also be informal. We, we kind of go back and forth with those things sometimes. Okay. That's a wrap. Wow. Right on time.
Now we're back on time.
Now we're back on time. I love it. Effortless.
Yeah, it looks like we have 20 minutes left. I don't know if the, if the public portion of our meeting is, is next.
Yes, and we are going to, we have two items left. We'll open it for public comment in a minute. And then we will close out our meeting with items for the next meeting and appreciations. Daria.
I'm not sure if it's appropriate that I digress, but I feel compelled to comment on the issue around the Brown Act and it being sort of an all or nothing thing. And I want to underscore the importance of what I heard from Lisa about transparency and inclusion. And that's the whole purpose of this. So if we are adhering to the Brown Act, we should adhere to the Brown Act as it is.
I, I absolutely agree, Daria. I just, I want to understand within the Brown Act, how can we share information so that we can all be smarter when we get together and make decisions?
So I can, I can speak to that a little bit for what it might be helped worth right now. So the whole intent of the Brown Act, I summarize again, not being an expert, but having expertise, is that the public has an opportunity to participate in, view, listen to, understand all of the work of any Brown Act board, committee, in this case, subcommittee. And that anything you do would not prohibit the public from witnessing your work and being able to participate in your work as a subcommittee. And so if you just think about it really simply, like I think when you read all the language and you get trained on Brown Act, it's overly complicated and it makes it very confusing. You just really want to think about, am I doing work that is similar to a meeting of my, my subcommittee people that the public can't participate in right now? So if I have an email and I want to say a bunch of different things to you all as a subcommittee and I'm going to shoot out an email and then you all respond and then you respond to each other's response, all of a sudden, we've just had an extensive amount of communication that the public has That the public has not been able to witness, participate in via public comment. Um, or just be part of in terms of the democratic process. So it's interesting to me that the, this is a conversation around ResJ, just simply from the standpoint that it's a justice. Kind of democracy issue. Um, that being said, it doesn't preclude you from doing work. And so that was one of the main concerns that I heard. Is that, you know, we want to be able to move faster and do work. I think you've set yourselves up well for that. You're meeting every other week. That's, that, you're gonna see that those meetings come really fast, right? Um, but the other thing is you can do uh, pairs of work. And you can do that quite effectively as you already have done, Patrice and Veronica. And you can share documents. But the, where the stopping point is, is you may not communicate and have a meeting. Any, you may not communicate in any way that would be eliminating the public from witnessing your engagement as a subcommittee. So for example, Patrice and Veronica come up with this amazing document. And they want to share it with everybody and everybody's super jazzed and into the document and y'all want to talk. Well, of course you do because it's an amazing document. But by all weighing in, in an email or in person or on the phone. You're eliminating the opportunity for your public, the people you serve, to participate and witness your meeting. So it doesn't mean you can't get work done and I think that was some of my offering of a different perspective. You can do the work. You can sit with the Google Doc. Um, you can't all engage on the Google Doc together because then the public doesn't get to participate in your work as a subcommittee. But you could take that and look at your questions. You could send a revision around to people that then you could all read to set you up successfully for your next meeting. You could even talk about it in pairs. You just can't do any communication or work that would be considered a meeting of the subcommittee. So I know I spoke for a long time, I apologize, but did that help lend any clarity? Patrice and then Veronica.
Uh, just a quick question and my question has more to do with information sharing. So thank you for what you just said. That was very helpful, but let's say that I read an article in the New York Times about what they're doing in New Jersey. On the same issue. Can I send that article to Anne and then can she send it to everyone without being in violation of the Brown Act?
So again, I'm not a lawyer, but my current understanding is absolutely yes. Now you couldn't all get on FaceTime or Zoom and have a. Enough of you that would be considered a meeting to discuss how the article is relevant for Fairfax. But the best way that we've gotten around it while people are learning the Brown Act is send everything to Anne. Because she will CC people. She will CC people so that there isn't an accidental response.
Got it. That makes perfect sense. Thank you. And just time check, we're at eight sixteen and I know that we um, have a portion of the meeting to speak with the public.
Okay, are we good to move on? Veronica then Bruce.
To, to just be very clear, I do not want to take, I really value the transparency and really appreciate the sentiment of making sure. That the members of our community and public know that what we are doing is um, on the table. For them to be aware of and engaged with and to comment on. Um, it is, is strictly in the um, vein of being able to move through. Exactly what Patrice brought up, exactly what we just referenced in terms of here's this thing we want to work on. Um, and really wanting to be able to do that well and swiftly and aware that our town staff. Is very overworked. And just like, I've sent so many emails to Anne the past week and been like, can you send it? And just curious about like, gosh, is this really effective? Is this actually going to allow the subcommittee? Not to not be transparent, it's not what I ever would want to do, but is this really the best use of, of our time? As subcommittee members and of the purpose of the subcommittee and might reevaluating how the Brown Act is associated. To allow that to be the most effective, but we'll trust council if that is what gets brought up to town council to um, evaluate that themselves.
Bruce? And then Alexandra, I just want to offer you an opportunity before we open public comment. Um, you haven't had a lot of airtime, so if you'd like to go.
I'd love to hear Alexandra, but then I, I just want to summarize something.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Bruce. I was just giving.
It was, Lisa, that was a really great description and I'll just only add to it that. Information sharing is certainly allowed. We can share information. It's really a lot. Cleaner and easier if we do it through Anne. Or possibly through Lisa, but I think the, the way we can do it is through Anne. If we just, if we have a document or something that we thought, as, as already happened, Veronica has shared some things with us. That here, this is something that you might like to read or here's a meeting coming up you might like to attend. That's been really helpful. The only thing is just that we wouldn't want to share something with the committee. That really is expressing our opinion. Like, here's how I think it should be done. Read this, because that's actually just saying, this is my opinion. And, and then just, there's a thing with Brown Act called serial meetings where if two of us talk. But then one of those talks with another person, then really the three of you have had a meeting. And so pretty quickly you're over the quorum, you're into the quorum, so. But the main point is just, and Lisa, you said it beautifully, the Brown Act is not our enemy. It is our friend. It's really core to imagine Mayor Daley's Chicago. You know, or imagine just sort of the, the inner workings of San Francisco politics and all the people who know each other. That that's how everything gets decided and I'm not any part of it whatsoever. That's where that came from. And you know, it's something to be respected and it slows us down. But it also is really, it's core to our values, so that's, thank you.
When you're talking about social justice, you're talking about privilege and power. And privilege and power exist in the margins and the corners and the secret rooms where people hold the privilege and power and enact it. And so part of Brown Act. Creates transparency where, in, in one way where there is privilege and power. Um, and I think those examples were, were great of sort of the most extreme examples. Um, Alex, Alexandra, did you want to say anything before we open it up for public comment?
Um, I guess something that I've, I, I feel like this conversation was important. But I also want to recognize that if I were some, a community member viewing this meeting, I think I would be very frustrated. Just because we've spent a lot of time in this meeting talking about logistics and going back and forth on things. Versus like really going through the questions or, I mean, the, the mission statement went by really quickly and that was awesome. But I just think that I would have felt frustrated. Um, and also maybe just like, this is my personality, but like. I don't worry about like the Brown Act unless it comes up. So it's not really something that I'm, it's like a bridge that I'll cross when I get there type thing, so like. I mean, I found the video that we were sent originally very helpful and so like I knew that like. Um, Amal like invited me to have like a Zoom with like a Zoom tea with her and like I knew that was okay. As long as I didn't, we didn't talk about ResJ and I didn't talk to anyone else, simple, like that was it. So um, I think there's also like a lot of resources that we can look into if we're curious about questions we have about the Brown Act. I think this conversation was important, but just remembering why we're in this meeting and what this space is intended for, I think is also um, helpful.
Thank you. Alright, I'm gonna um, officially close that last item. And uh, Anne, can you open? We're gonna officially open public comments. Yes, I, I don't see any hands, so, oh, I see Joe. Okay, hi Joe, go ahead and talk. You have three minutes.
Alright, thank you very much and, and um, congratulations on your, your, your vision or, or goal. And, and um, it's so succinct and I, I think. Um, there was, you have all these questions and that's wonderful and I love that there's gonna be chunks. And it sounds like within the goals are three chunks, you know, there's the, the, the practices. Um, budget is a huge piece as well and then the, the alternatives. And that's the interesting part for, I think, for the initial conversation with, with um, Acting Chief Tabaranza is. Um, not only a discussion on his openness to alternatives, since that is the mission. But also, you know, the, a discussion with him, that he's, he's like, he's auditioning for a job as well. Through this process, um, he's auditioning for the job, so it's, it's, it's an opportunity for the public to get to know him. And kind of within the context of, of the current climate of policing in our country. So I think that like hearing what he has to say about the institution of policing and systemic racism. These are all such important things to hear in this initial conversation. And so I'd encourage you to, to go that route and, and um, and, and, and rather than getting into the. The nuts and bolts of specific practices here right away. But we need to get to know Rico and how open he is to this path that this. This subcommittee's been, been, been charged with, which is an alternative. And uh, and that's a huge piece that, that we'd like to hear from Rico about, so thank you for your work.
Thank you. Okay, great. I don't, I don't see anyone else's hand, so.
Okay.
Okay, um, I'm gonna go ahead and formally close public comment. And that brings us to the closing of our meeting. Six minutes to go, we are so on time, y'all. Woo woo, alright. So we have to discuss items for the next meeting and this is where you all give input on the agenda planning. And then I will um, work with the chair to plan our next agenda. Um, and then we will have appreciations and close our meeting for the evening. So items that I've kept a list of were a discussion of a chair, whether or not um, that should be Bruce. Or a member of the public and then a, a follow-up on discussion around the Brown Act. Other items?
I'm not sure we'll have anything to follow up on unless we just are getting staff to give us some advice. Because we won't be able to hear from council if we're gonna bring it to council and actually agendize and I'm, that's. We'll see, but if we, if we are going to ask council to actually have a discussion on council about amending their. Charge for us. That, that's not gonna happen before the, our next meeting, so.
Anne, can you, can you remove Joe from the panelists? Thank you. Okay, Veronica?
I just would love to have included in the piece around the chair appointment, what the um. Responsibilities are of the chair. Within that conversation.
That's, yeah, that's a good thing, yeah.
Other items for the next agenda?
I think that given the work that Veronica and I are about to do with chunking up the questions, we need to review those questions and those, those themes.
Yeah, that's the centerpiece, yeah.
And something that was sort of a thread throughout, but was not named explicitly. Do you want to do any collective planning for your meeting with the interim police chief? Where you all can collectively plan that meeting with my facilitation? Or do you want to leave that to? The agenda planning chair? I've got. I've got that you're saying you, but I don't know what, I don't know what that means. I'm like reading hand signals. Can you?
I personally don't want Rico to feel attacked. And so I think that by chunking up the agenda, starting with the casual big questions that he's already aware of. And leaving it at that might be a good way to proceed to build on the relationship. As, as many people have said thus far.
So Patrice, is that you would like a section on the next agenda to plan the meeting with the police chief? Because we're not planning it right now. We're just asked, we're just deciding if it's.
No, I, I actually think it should be bundled into just looking at the questions and how they're chunked up. And deciding which questions we speak to Rico about the first time. I don't think it's, it's two separate agenda items.
Okay, um, so I lost track of who's first. I'm gonna call on Daria just because you haven't had a chance to speak in a while. And then Veronica, you're next.
I think it's important that we do uh, speak a little bit about planning the meeting so that we have some order. And uh, a goal and an objective, so I, I would like to address it. Maybe it won't take more than ten minutes.
Is that a thumbs up Alexandra? Okay, it was like the tiny little, it was a tiny thumbs up. Veronica, you're next.
Just a thumbs up to that and would appreciate you facilitating that within this next meeting of ours um, to plan what the meeting with. Lieutenant or interim chief Tabarans that would be.
Okay. Happy to do that. Um, other thoughts? That's, that's already a lengthy agenda. The time flies. Um, but are there other thoughts for the agenda and then we can prioritize? Okay, so I have um, discussed the chair appointment, transition potentially. And then responsibilities, clarification around responsibilities of the chair. Uh, we may need to leave time for Brown Act discussion and that's sort of pending what happens uh, until the next meeting. And reviewing the questions and the chunking that's gonna happen in the interim. And then planning the first meeting with the police chief. Correct? Okay, so uh, Bruce and I will get together and uh, create an agenda for that time. Um, one thing I would encourage all of you to think about before that meeting. Is just similar to what we needed to do on ResJ with community building and building some shared foundation of our collective work. It's gonna be so important knowing that there is gonna be conflict intense moments. Um, and there's also gonna be incredible moments of alignment and this is such. I hear some of the, the hesitancy and, and some fear and lots of emotion. But I also just want to highlight all of you and the town of Fairfax that you are engaging in visionary work for your community. And I want to encourage you to lean in to the possibility that this might be the most incredible partnership. That you create and that this is the creation of the future of Fairfax. And so while we may hold fear, I think it's also this tremendous moment of hope and opportunity. And we've seen that around the nation where things have happened, like unimaginably good things have happened in police reform. And reallocation of budgets while the role of the police were also honored. And so as you go about your lives in the next couple of weeks until the next meeting. I really want to encourage you to just envision that partnership and think about. The trust and the relationship that you all need to have with each other, with the community, but also with the interim police chief. To really do, to do that deep work. So appreciations uh, will end. If there aren't any last comments, we'll end on appreciations. Veronica?
Did we want Patrice to share on the process observer? Did I just miss that?
Oh, I'm not process observer. I'm just timekeeper and we're one minute over.
Oh, Bruce?
Well, I, I don't have the uh, the, the worksheet for the process observation, but just uh, I would say this was a. We were very informal in this meeting and, and as is, as appropriate because we can, we're small. And I think it went really well. Um, I, I, I'll just leave it at that. I think it went really well and we. We got through a lot and um, we're working really well together unless anybody else has any other comments. On process.
I agree.
And I appreciate us all.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go, Daria.
An appreciation?
Yes, let's.
Okay, yeah, so I just wanted to appreciate the community input. I can't believe, oh, so we had a meeting before this. And throughout the community input is fantastic. I'm so grateful for it. It really expands our, our committee.
Veronica?
Super grateful that you're here, Lisa, facilitating us in this way and continually grateful. A lot of appreciation for the way that you hold space.
Thank you. My pleasure. Other appreciations? Okay. Oh, Alexandra?
Um, I just appreciate like everyone's voice and thoughts on this committee. I really appreciate it. And yeah, I guess that's it.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. It is always a privilege and honor to be here with all of you. And it's just one of the greatest privilege of my work is witnessing people like you working for the liberation of all of humanity, and I do not say that lightly. You put your thoughts, your spirit, your souls, your beliefs on the line when you do this work, and I'm just grateful and feel privileged to be a part of it. And on a very superficial note, we are only three minutes over on the agenda, so. That was great timekeeping and teamwork. So, good night, everybody. Have a wonderful two weeks. Until I see you again.